Praise the Lord, everybody. Praise the Lord, praise the Lord. Certainly, we are glad, amen, for another time of coming together. This is our Deeper Life Bible Study Session on tonight. And certainly, we bless the Lord. We bless the Lord for his goodness. We bless the Lord for his mercy. We bless the Lord for his kindness, amen, knowing that God is good all the time. And all the time, God is good. And we welcome you to another Deeper Life Bible Study Session. As you're coming in, amen, if you would, hit that share button, hit that like button. Amen, Sister Ramona Ball is watching. Bless your heart. Praise the Lord, praise the Lord. All of those that are coming in, amen, we welcome you. As you're coming in, hit the share button, hit the like button, put some hearts on the screen. Amen, you're welcome to comment, amen, and join in with the service on tonight. And certainly, again, we are happy to be able to come once again into the house of the Lord. I believe it was David that said, "I was glad when they said unto me, 'Let us go into the house of the Lord.'" All right, Mom Benny Hawkins is on. God bless you. Praise the Lord, praise the Lord. Amen, all of you that are coming in, come on in, come on in. God bless you. Amen, as we make our way toward the altar of God, amen, take us to the throne, amen. I was glad when they said unto me, I was glad when they said unto me, I was glad when they said unto me, "Oh, let us go into the house of the Lord." Oh, I came running when they said unto me, oh, yes, I came running when they said unto me, I came running when they said unto me, "Oh, let us go into the house of the Lord." Well, I said yes when they said unto me, I said yes when they said unto me, Well, I said yes when they said unto me, "Oh, let us go into the house of the Lord." Well, I was glad when they said unto me, I was glad when they said unto me, Well, I was glad when they said unto me, "Oh, let us go into the house of the Lord." Amen, I was glad when they said unto me, "Let us go into the house of the Lord," amen. Once again, we welcome all of you that are coming in, all of you, those that are on their way, amen, and we appreciate, amen, certainly, we are missing those that are absent from among us, amen, due to various situations, amen, but we thank God, amen, that we're able to come together, at least on social media, amen, and in spirit and in heart, amen. I hear people say all the time, "I may not be there physically, but I'm there in spirit." Certainly, we would rather you here physically, but we thank God, amen, that you're with us in spirit, praying for us, praying for us, amen. Sister Hattie Tennen, bless you. Praise the Lord, amen. All right, good, good, good. Amen, those that are normally here with us in the sanctuary or joining us online, amen, and we appreciate you taking the time, amen, appreciate you taking the time, amen, to share part of the evening with us and join in in our deeper life, excuse me, our deeper life Bible study. All right, and certainly, if you have any requests tonight, amen, certainly, we're gonna ask that you let it be known. Sister Nyla, bless your heart. Praise the Lord to you. Good to see you. Thank you for being here, amen. Certainly, we're praying for the saints everywhere, praying for those that are sick, praying for those that are shut in, praying for those that are working, those that are traveling, those that are away from us, absent from among us, those that are out of the ark of safety. Praying that God will heal, God will touch, and God will deliver. Praying for those that are bereaved on tonight, amen. Certainly, we just learned earlier today of the young man whose life was taken, amen, who's simply just trying to lead young folks to the cross, amen. Brother Hank, God bless you, sir, amen. Praise the Lord, praise the Lord. But we're praying for the family of Mr. Charlie Kirk, amen. And certainly, we are saddened to learn that he was taken down in such a tragic way. And certainly, as I said, he was just trying to lead people to the cross, just trying to lead people to the Lord. And we understand that there's gonna be those times and those days, amen. The Bible says, "We'll be persecuted for the name's sake. We'll be persecuted for the gospel's sake." And certainly, it's sad that it has to be that way, and this is the world that we're living in. But we know, amen, that prophecy is unfolding and that the Lord is soon to return. The Lord is soon to return, and my prayer is, "Lord, help me to be ready. Help me to be ready, amen. When you call my name, I wanna be somewhere listening, listening for my name," amen. Certainly, all of the silent or unspoken requests, amen, we are taking our petitions and placing them before the Lord, that he would honor, hear and honor our petition, knowing that his arms are not short, that he cannot deliver, nor his ears heavy, that he cannot hear. Amen, and I know the Bible says, "If whatsoever things we desire, when we pray," amen, "we believe that we receive them and we shall have them." Also praying for my friend, amen, District Elder Lester McCombs, as he travels, amen, on his way home from Georgia, amen. We're praying that the Lord will guide him and protect him and go before him, see him to his destination safely, with no harm or danger, amen, in the name of the Lord. Gracious God, we thank you for yet another opportunity to bless your name, knowing that your name is worthy to be praised. From the rising of the sun to the going down of the same, your name is worthy to be praised. God, we come before you at this time just to say thank you. Before we ask you for anything, we wanna thank you for everything. Thank you for your goodness, for your mercy, for your kindness, your tender care. Thank you for last night's lying down, how you watched over us, you kept us in the center of your care. You didn't let any harm or danger come near us, oh God, even though danger was all around. You kept your hand of protection over us, amen. As we slumbered and as we slept, God, you kept watch over us. You dispatched the angels to keep watch round about our dwelling, and you didn't let any harm or danger come nigh our dwelling. On this morning, you touched us and enabled us to rise clothed and in our right minds. As we rolled out of bed, we discovered we still had the activities of our limbs and the blood was running warm in our veins. Thank you, Lord, for a reasonable portion of health and strength. Thank you for being able to go all day long, oh God, to do what must be done, giving us the strength, oh God, supplying our needs, making ways out of no ways, opening doors that were shut, oh God, and shutting those doors that need to be closed. And we thank you even now, for right here, right now, for this place. Thank you for these that are joining us over Facebook and via social media. We thank you, Lord, that we are here to glorify your name. We're here to lift up your name, for your name, your name alone is worthy to be praised. And God, we ask that you touch, heal, and deliver in the hospital, in the sick room, in the convalescent home. Oh God, go there on the school campus, protect our kids, our children, oh God, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, oh God, our sons and daughters. Draw them in from the north, the south, the east, and the west. Bring them in, God, before it's everlasting too late. Don't let us, oh God, don't let our praying be in vain. Don't let our preaching be in vain. Don't let our worship be in vain. But Lord, lend ear to our petition, oh God, answer our prayers. We know, oh God, that you're not a man that you should lie, neither the son of man that you should repent. If you said it, you will do it. If you promised it, you will bring it to pass. And we stand on your promises even now. Stand on your word, for the word of the Lord, oh, it will not fail. It will not go out and return void, but it will accomplish, ah, yeah, thank you. It will accomplish those things that you've set it to do. And right now, we stand on the promise. We stand on your word. We stand on your word that said, "You will bring sons and daughters from the ends of the earth, that they be seated in the kingdom." We stand on your word that said that you would not have any of us to perish. It is not your will that any should perish, but that all should come to repentance. And we thank you, Lord, that you made a way for us to repent. You made a way for us to, oh God, obtain eternal life. You made a way on Calvary's cross. You made a way that we, oh God, might have a right to live, to have life and have it more abundantly. And we wanna thank you right now. Thank you, God, all of the requests that have gone before you, all of the requests, Lord, you see and you know what we stand in need of. You know our needs even before we ask. And right now, God, we thank you that all of our needs are supplied. We thank you that all of our needs are met right now in Christ Jesus. We thank you, Lord, that you are all we need. And God, as we go forth today, we ask that you let the words of my mouth and meditation of my heart be acceptable in thy sight, oh Lord, my strength and my redeemer. Let our tongue be as the pen of a ready writer, God. Write on the words that we say, God, anoint our ears and our eyes, oh God, to hear and see what you're saying unto the church. And Lord, let us not be only hearers, but let us be doers of your word. And if you do that, God will be so careful to give your name the praise, the glory, and the honor for all these blessings we ask in Jesus' name. And we declare now, the devil is defeated, God is exalted, and Jesus is Lord forevermore, amen, amen. All right, once again, we welcome all of you, amen, to our Deeper Life Bible Study Session, amen, on this second Tuesday in the month of September, amen. A new week, I guess it is, well, new month, rather, a new month, amen, September, amen. The first week, second week in a new month, amen, and we thank God, amen. Thank God that we're here. Thank God that we're here, amen, to celebrate Jesus, amen, and we thank God. All right, in our session tonight, we're talking about the journey from Egypt to the Promised Land. We've been talking about that for the last few sessions that we've had, amen, exploring the journey that the Israelites have taken, coming out of Egypt, and the things that they've encountered, amen, the things that they've encountered, amen, knowing that they were brought out of Egypt by the hand of Moses. Brought out of Egypt by the hand of Moses. And certainly, we know that it has not been an easy task, has not been an easy task, amen. But even with that, God is still with them. God is still with them, amen. And we're coming from the book of Joshua on tonight, Joshua chapter 1, verses 1 through 7. Joshua chapter 1, verses 1 through 7. And the word of the Lord reads, "Now, after the death of Moses, the servant of the Lord, it came to pass that the Lord spake unto Joshua, the son of Nun, Moses' minister, saying, 'Moses, my servant, is dead. Now therefore arise, go over this Jordan, thou and all this people unto the land which I do give to them, even to the children of Israel. Every place that the soul of thy foot shall tread,' yes, 'every place that the soul of thy foot shall tread upon, that have I given unto you, as I said unto Moses, 'from the wilderness and this Lebanon, even unto the great river, the river Euphrates, all the land of the Hittites, and unto the great sea toward the going down of the sun, shall be your coasts. There shall not any man be able to stand before thee all the days of thy life. As I was with Moses, so shall I be with thee. I will not fail thee, nor forsake thee. Be strong and of a good courage; for unto this people shalt thou divide for an inheritance the land, which I swear unto their fathers to give them. Only be thou strong and very courageous, that thou mayest observe to do according to all the law, which Moses, my servant, commanded thee. Turn not from it to the right hand or to the left, that thou mayest prosper whethersoever thou goest.'" All right, the word of God for the people of God, and everybody said, "Amen, amen, amen." All right, again, we're talking about the journey from Egypt to the Promised Land, Egypt to the Promised Land. Well, so for forty years, they were wandering in the wilderness. Forty years of wandering had brought them to finally stand up on the mountaintop and look over into the land of promise. As we shared before, what should have taken about two weeks, ten days, took them forty years. Because of their murmuring, because of their complaining, because of their disobedience, to go two hundred, two hundred and fifty miles, took them some two weeks, ten days. What they were looking for was basically right around the corner. But because of their mentality, because of their complaining, because they felt that it was better that they had stayed in Egypt and died than rather than to come out to the wilderness and die. They felt like at least we had something to eat while we were in Egypt. Yes, we were under a hard taskmaster. Yes, we were in slavery. But at least we had, amen, as we would say in the modern vernacular, three squares and a cot, three square meals a day and a place to sleep. They were complaining, but they have gotten to the point now that God has allowed them to finally get to the point where they could see the Promised Land. They could look over into the land of promise. As we talked about last time, Moses was able to see the Promised Land. God will allow him to look over into the Promised Land, but because of his disobedience to God, he would not be able to enter into the land of Canaan. Now, every Israelite over twenty years of age, when they left Egypt under Moses' leadership, they were now dead. After some forty years of wandering, those that were of twenty years of age and older, they were gone off the scene. Except three people, Moses, Joshua, and Caleb. Those are the only ones that were left out of these forty years of wandering. Those were the only ones who were left to get to this point to where they could see the Promised Land. Well, I don't say the only ones left. I'll say the part of the original group. We'll put it that way, part of the original group that left Egypt, those that were of age. Now, there were some that were younger, some that were probably babies when they left the land of Egypt, but now have come into young adulthood. So they're still a remnant. They're still a people, if you will. But a lot of those who were older, after these forty years, they have gone off the scene. But Moses is left, and Joshua is left, and Caleb is left. All the others had died out without realizing their cherished blessing, without seeing the Promised Land, without being able to enjoy what God had promised them. Why is that? Why? Why? What caused those Israelites who left Egypt by God's power to lose their privilege of setting foot upon the Promised Land? Well, in formulating an answer to that, remember that God never breaks his promise. Oh, no, 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 God never breaks his promise. Forty years before this time, God had told the children of Israel, "I will take you to be my people." He said, "And I will be to you a God, and ye shall know that I am the Lord, your God, which bringeth you out from under the burdens of the Egyptians. And I will bring you into the land concerning that which I did swear to give it to you." He had already told them, or he had already promised, that he was gonna give them the land for an inheritance. He said, "I'll bring you into the land concerning the which I did swear to give it to you for an inheritance." And then he says, "I am the Lord, in case you forgot who I am, in case you've forgotten who it is that had brought you this far. In case you failed to remember who's been with you all this time." He says, "I want you to know, I am the Lord. I am the Lord." Now, God always keeps his promise. Yeah, he has the power to make promise, and he has the power to fulfill his promise. Oh, yes. Isn't that good news? He has the power to make a promise, and he has the power to fulfill a promise. A lot of times, we'll make a promise, or we'll make a, we'll give our word, or we'll make a statement, or we'll, we'll make something, tell somebody something, and we're not able to come up to, fulfill that promise, or we're not able to follow through with what we've said. But God, as I mentioned earlier, is not a man that he should lie, oh, bless his name. And he's neither the son of man that he should repent. If he said it, he will do it. If he promised it, he's got to make it good. So he has the power to make a promise, and he has the power to fulfill that promise. Some doubt this fact. Some still, even, they know about God, and they've seen God work, and they know the goodness of God, but yet they doubt the fact that God will keep his word. The initial company of Israelites who departed from Egypt, they did so reluctantly. Yeah, they did so with reluctance, bad as things were in Egypt. I guess sometimes the thing that you know seems better than the things that you don't know. The known seems better than the unknown. And to those who have a lack of faith, sometimes you don't wanna know what you don't wanna know. It's better to not know what you don't know. During this history, their forty-year trek, if you will, their forty-year wandering in the desert, the children of Israel alternately blessed God and cursed God. They would alternately bless his name and curse his name. Sister Eliza Harris, praise the Lord, God bless you, ma'am. Good to see you, my dear. Alternatively or alternately, they would bless God and curse God's name. When he showed them miracles, they humbled themselves. But when the tests and the rigors of the desert life became difficult, they hardened their hearts in anger and resentment. They forgot. They forgot who God is. They forgot his power. And they trembled in fear at the thought of facing the Canaanites. Well, in doing so, they lost their privilege to enter into the land of promise. Now, as children, as their children stood on the mountain and saw in the distance the Promised Land, the realization of their expectations were, they, they had to come to ask themselves, "Are we ready? Are we ready to take on this task? Are we ready to enter into the land of promise?" They'd been complaining and murmuring and grumbling all this time, but then when they come to it, when they are on the outskirts, when they can look over into the land of promise, they have to ask themselves, "Are we ready to take the land?" Sometimes you gotta ask yourself, "Are you ready for the task that is set before you? Are you ready for the task that is at hand? Are you ready to do what you've told God you're going to do?" Somebody said, "I made a vow to the Lord, and I won't take it back. On my knees, I made a vow. I can't go back." But we have to face the realization, "Are we really ready to undergo and to take on the task that we've been given?" As they stood on the mountain, they saw in the distance the Promised Land. The realization of their expectations, it hit them hard, hit them in the face. Reality hit them. And then they had to check themselves. They had to ask the question, "Are we ready to go? Are we ready to take the land? Did they appreciate the great blessings of receiving that which was denied their fathers? Could they move forward? Could they move into the land under the leadership of the living prophet and possess the country on God's terms? A lot of times, we wanna go, and we wanna do, and we wanna, we wanna undertake the task, but we will only wanna do it on our terms. We only wanna do it at our own pace, at our own, at our own convenience. But you have to ask yourself, "Are we ready to do what it is to be done on God's terms?" Not leaning to our own understanding, but in all of our ways acknowledging God and letting him direct our path. Could they move into the land under this new leadership? Now, by this time, Moses is gone off the scene. And they have to ask themselves, "Are we really ready? Can we go in and possess the country on God's terms? Or would they pollute their inheritance as their fathers had done before them?" When the generation, including Moses, when they had died off in those intervening years, Joshua was finally ready to lead a new generation of Israelites to conquer the Promised Land. The Old Testament book of Joshua tells the story of this conquest. And what would follow is in this brief summary, Joshua really is a brief summary of what had happened all this time, from their journey from Egypt up to the entering into the Promised Land. And the first major target for them was the city of Jericho. We hear a lot about the, you know, Joshua fit the battle of Jericho and the Jericho walls and how the wall fell. We hear a lot about that. But this is describing their first major battle or their first major undertaking. The first major target that they had to conquer in order to start possessing the land was the city of Jericho, yeah, the city of Jericho. Jericho was in the middle part of Canaan. And God dried up the Jordan River, the boundary of Canaan. So they, they, they had to get past the Jordan River in order to take on the city of Jericho. So the whole nation had to pass over, over Jordan. Now, if you remember, coming out of Egypt, they had to pass through the Red Sea, oh, yes. So here it is again now. They're faced with a body of water that is standing between them and their first major victory. So that whole nation could pass over on dry land. God made it, made it possible. He dried up the Jordan River, the boundary of Canaan, so that the whole nation could pass over on dry land. However, the attack on Jericho was unconventional. Yeah, they couldn't take it just normally. They had to, they, they had to seek God on this one. It was to be done in such a way that all would know that it was God who was giving Israel the victory. Instead of laying siege to the city, the people would simply march around for seven days. They would march around the city, march around They would march around the city, march around the walls for seven days. And on the seventh day, the wall fell down and Israel stormed the city. Putting to death all the inhabitants except Rahab and her family. Y'all remember Rahab? She was the one that helped them. She was the one that helped the spies, amen, to save their lives. So when the city of Jericho was taken by storm, taken by force, they killed everybody, but they spared Rahab and her family. The Israelites were to take no spoils as everything was to be dedicated to God. Their next target was the city of AI. Now, don't be confused about this artificial intelligence that we have going on in the technical world. AI, you know, that's, that's a whole different thing. This is the city, uh, in biblical times. This is a city called AI. The Israelites' army felt it was, uh, it would be easy to take the city. They thought that would be an easy victory. But unexpectedly, the men of the city defeated Israel. Well, what went wrong? God has been, uh, good to them so far. God has been guiding them so far. Why couldn't they be victorious over the city or the men of AI, the city of AI? The men of the city defeated Israel. It turns out that God was not with them because one of the men of Israel had taken some forbidden items from Jericho. Remember I said that all of the spoils, all that they had accumulated, all that they took from Jericho, that was supposed to be dedicated to God. They weren't supposed to take anything. Take nothing for yourselves. But one of the men of Israel had taken something that they shouldn't have taken from Jericho. And that caused them to lose the battle over AI. That caused them to lose the battle. Well, this is the second time in Israel's journey that their disobedience cost them a victory. This is the second time. Remember, uh, when God spoke to Moses and told Moses to speak to the rock? And instead Moses smote the rock. That caused Moses to miss out on entering into the land of promise. Now, this time, God told them, "Don't take anything from the city. Don't take any of the spoils, but dedicate everything to God." And one of the men took something, he took maybe a, a souvenir, as we would say, and he took something that he shouldn't have taken, and that cost them the victory. That cost them the victory. Once that, now, they had to repent over that. And once that was dealt with, then Israel defeated AI. After their victory at AI, Joshua renewed the covenant with the people at Mount Ebal. It's important to remember that, 'cause at this time, Canaan was not a nation yet, but a land, an area where kings ruled over cities and territories. A group of five Amorite kings decided that they should align themselves preemptively to attack Israel. But they were all defeated. And later, another group of kings decided, uh, kings from the northern half of Canaan, they also formed a union to attack the Israelites. They too were defeated. Joshua and the people of Israel continued the conquest until all of Canaan was subdued. They kept on fighting, kept on being, being victorious. Now, that just lets us understand and that just lets us know that if you are disobedient, God will allow you to be defeated. But if you are obedient to God, he'll allow you to be victorious. They had to repent over their disobedience. And when they got it right with God, God caused them to have the victory time and time again. Canaan was subdued. Israel's strategy seemed to have been, uh, to defeat the strongest cities first. Go in and, and take the strongest cities first. And, and, and when they did that, then they would divide the territory among the individual tribes and allow each tribe to finish conquering in their own territory. Well, during this conquest of Canaan, God intervened miraculously on several occasions, including the day that the sun stood still. Y'all remember that battle that was going on and God allowed the sun to stand still so that Israel could be victorious? Oh, yeah. Israel was largely successful in defeating and driving out the Canaanites. However, they were not completely successful. Sometimes they left pockets of Canaanites to continue to, to rule themselves. And sometimes they enslaved Canaanites. Uh, and both of these, uh, things had been forbidden by God. They, they weren't supposed to leave anything. They weren't supposed to leave, they weren't supposed to kill out all of the inhabitants of Canaan. Both of these things had been forbidden by God, who told Israel to drive them out completely. And as a result, the Canaanites remaining in the land became a temptation and a snare to the people of Israel. At times, Israel would worship the Canaanite gods. See, here they are again, getting off track. Remember when Moses went up to the mountain to talk with God? Uh, and he was gone for so long that the children of Israel got impatient and they, uh, fashioned a golden idol, they fashioned a golden calf to worship. They got impatient. Here they are again, getting impatient. And as a result, uh, they started worshiping the Canaanite gods. My Lord, when will we learn? And at times, God, uh, would allow those remaining pagans to rule over them. See, they started slipping. They started slipping again. And once you start being disobedient to God, he'll allow your victories to slip between your hands. God would allow the remaining pagans to rule over the Israelites. Why? Because they started adopting their customs. They started worshiping their gods. They started doing the things that the Canaanites were doing. They were supposed to be separate. Matter of fact, they were supposed to have driven out all the Canaanites. But because they let some go, started worshiping their idols, started worshiping the Canaanite gods. And God caused the, the, the pagans to, to rule over them. So the book of Joshua tells this story very, very well. And, and, and today, there are many who, who find fault with God, who would, would, would order a genocide. In other words, he, when God would speak and tell them to, to clear out the land, to, to not leave anything, to drive out all the things that's not like him. The Bible makes it clear that God was sending Israel into the promised land to punish the people who were living there for their wickedness. Yeah. Certainly, God has the right to administer judgment any way he wants to. If he told them to go in and clear out the land, if he told them to go in and drive out the Canaanites, if he told them to go in there and kill everybody that's in there because they were wicked, then that's what they needed to do. And if that was God's judgment, he could administer his judgment any way he wants to do it. The book of Joshua is one of the most important writings in the Old Covenant and should never be separated from, uh, what's known as the Pentateuch. And the Pentateuch of which is, is, is once, uh, both, uh, a, a, a compilation of, uh, the first five books of Moses, uh, to which, which the, the, the book of Joshua kinda culminates all of the stories and all of the activities and all of the experiences that those first five books, uh, let us know about. Joshua brings that all into, uh, uh, into a realization, if you will. He brings that all into a way that we can understand the journey that the Israelites had to take. Between this book and the five books of Moses, there's, it's the same analogy as between the four Gospels, Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John. Uh, and then Acts comes along and sums up everything that happened in those four books. So in other words, Joshua is a completion or culmination of everything that happened in the first five books of Moses. Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, Deuteronomy. Joshua comes in and brings together all of those books or lets you understand all of those books, just like Acts comes together to let you understand all of the Acts and all of the things, uh, that the first four books or the four books of the Gospel, uh, it, Acts kinda is a culmination of all of those books. Yeah. The Pentateuch contains a history of the Acts of the Apostles. The Pentateuch contains a history of the Acts of the great Jewish legislator and the laws on which the Jewish church should be established. The book of Joshua gives an account of the establishment of that church in the land of Canaan. According to, uh, the often repeated promises and the declarations of God, the Gospel gives an account of the transactions of Jesus Christ. Oh, yeah. The great Christian legislator, as some would call it. And, and, and of those laws on which his church should be established and by which it should be governed. Yeah. The Acts of the Apostle gives an account of the actual establishment of the, the founder, of the church and its founders. According to, uh, the predictions and the promises of its great founder. Thus then the Pentateuch, the culmination of all of what happened, the culminations of all these books, it bears, uh, as a pointed, uh, a, a, a pointed relation to the Gospel as the book of Joshua does to the Acts of the Apostles. In other words, Joshua brings together all of the first five books of Moses. Acts brings together the four Gospels so that we understand what happened during those times. We can read about it and, and especially the synoptic Gospels. The synoptic Gospels, Matthew, Mark, and Luke, uh, they give, uh, similar accounts of what happened. But each one is, is, is just slightly different because the writer is giving their personal opinion or their personal experience of what they encountered during that time. They all walked with Jesus, yes. They all had an encounter with Jesus. They all experienced Jesus, but they all experienced him in their own way. They wrote about it their own way. Just like your experience might be different from my experience. If you were to write about what you encountered with Jesus, it would be slightly different than what I would write, but, but by the same token, it would be similar because we're experiencing him all the same. We're experiencing him at the same time, but he might bless you a different way or he might bless me in a different area. I write about that and I can tell you how he blessed me and how he brought me out and how he supplied my needs. And then you can write about how he blessed you and what your encounter was and how he made a way for you, how he healed your body, how he brought you up. Amen. How he, he made a way out of no way when you were down to your last and God, hallelujah, through the person of Jesus Christ, through his blood and through the Holy Ghost. Amen. You had a healing, you had a different experience, you had an encounter with the Holy Ghost, or you had an encounter with Jesus Christ that was personal and special to you. Oh, bless God. Uh, we've all had our personal experience with God. We've all had a personal encounter with Jesus Christ. Mine may be different from yours, yours may be different from mine, but we can all tell the story of how we had a talk with Jesus. Uh, one day, uh, as the song would say, "One day when I was lost", he died upon the cross. And I know it was the blood. But the blood might mean something different than to you than it does to me. Overall, in general, the blood means salvation to all, but it may mean it in a different way to you than it does to me. Yeah. He might have had to reach way down to get me and pick me up and turn me around, whereas you may not have been as bad and he didn't have to reach as far down to get you. Is this making sense to you? If this, I, I hope, I hope I'm getting through. I don't see no hearts and lives. Y'all ain't saying nothing. I like a talkback church. Amen. God bless you. Sister Terry, God bless you. Amen. Well, we understand, amen, that the, the experience that the children of Israel is having, amen, is bringing them now to the land of promise. All the ones that were, uh, coming over under Moses' leadership, they're dying out. They're dying out. Joshua is the new leader. God is, is directing them and giving them what to do and how to do. They're going in and they're possessing the land. Hallelujah. They're going in and possessing the land, amen, little by little. They're gaining victory after victory after victory. They're getting to where, uh, they, 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 they're driving out the Canaanites. The kings had come together and decided they were gonna go against him, but God gave them the victory. Can't you see how God is moving in this and working in this? And how God, amen, is, 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 is on their side. God is working through them. God is making a way for them to inhabit the land which he has already given them. That's the good thing about it. God has already given, he's already promised it to them. He had already given them the land. All they needed to do was possess the land. If they had been obedient, if they had done what God had said do, if they weren't so, so, so quick to be grumbling and complaining and murmuring and, and fussing and fighting and all of that, had they just done as God instructed them, they would have been in the kingdom. They would have been in the, in the, in the promised land. They would have been able, amen, to go in and possess the land. But because they were disobedient, they had to go round and round in the wilderness. They had to wander for forty years. But thank God, they've come to the point now to where they're listening to God. They're listening to the voice of the Lord. They're being obedient. They're doing what God said do. And beloved, when you do what God said do, there is no demon, no devil, no witch, no warlock, no voodoo, no hoodoo, or whatever you do, nothing can stop you when you are in obedience to God and God is leading you and guiding you and he is making, uh, he said, "I'll make the darkness light before you. All your battles I will fight before you. Whatever's wrong, I'll make it right before you. And the high place, ha, 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 bless his name, the high place I'll bring down." He said, "When you're walking by the way, I'll lead you. On the fatness of the land, I'll feed you. And a mansion in the sky, I'll deed you. And the high place, thank you, Jesus, I'll bring down." If you're obedient to God, if you do what God said do, he'll bring down the high place in your life. He'll turn things around, oh God. He'll make your enemies your footstool. Everything will work in your favor. Everything that you ask of God, he will do if you are obedient to his word. That's all I'm trying to tell you tonight. If you do what God said, if you're obedient to his word, if you listen and let him guide you- if you're obedient to his word, if you listen and let him guide you, let him lead you, amen, he will show you who he is. He had to show the Israelites who he was, who he is. He had to let them know, now, because you were disobedient, some of you are not gonna make it. Because you didn't do what I said, you'll see the promised land, but you won't enter in. That's right, God got a way. He certainly does, amen. He'll let you see the promise, but you won't be able to experience, you won't be able, amen, to go over into the land. But if you are obeying God, if you're following after him every step of the way, he'll lead you right into the promised land. And nothing and nobody can keep you from it. Well, I bless God tonight, amen, for, uh, this lesson, seeing how, uh, they, the children of Israel, the Israelites, encountered certain things and encountered, uh, certain, uh, difficulties a- 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 and, and basically, they brought it on themselves. They brought it on themselves. But thank God, he's merciful. Thank God, he's a merciful God. And he won't hold it against us. I often pray, Lord, don't, don't deal with me according to my transgressions. But deal with me according to your loving kindness. Deal with me according to your loving kindness. So we see, amen, that, uh, this is, this, these are just some of the things that they encountered on their way, uh, into the promised land. Next week or next time, we hope to, uh, be able to explore some more. Uh, we'll probably get into, uh, how they actually, uh, God instructed them to, uh, march around Jericho. And we'll look at how that came out and, 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 we know the story, of course, but we'll look into the intricacies, if you will, uh, of how they were to go in, uh, a- a- and pursue the city of Jericho. And we all know that when they obeyed God, when they obeyed God, when they did what God said do, all he said was march around. Seven days, march around the wall. And on that seventh day, let the horns blow, let the people shout, hallelujah, shout with a great shout. I don't know of anybody, amen, outside of God's assistance, that can bring down, uh, a wall that surrounds a city just by the shouting of their voices. That just lets you know that if God is in it, nothing can keep you from it. Oh, bless God. If God is in it, nothing can keep you from it. Hallelujah. The Lord bless you, amen. We hope that you've enjoyed this lesson tonight, amen. We appreciate you, uh, for being with us. Thank you for hanging out with us on tonight. Thank you for hanging in, uh, for the duration, and we appreciate you for being here. Uh, next time, we'll, like I said, we'll explore some more, uh, of the, uh, journey from Egypt to the promised land. Amen. Going in to take the city of Jericho. Hallelujah. Our next session will be, if the Lord says, the same, uh, September the twenty-fourth. September twenty-fourth. I believe that's somebody's birthday. Amen. September twenty-fourth. Amen. It will be right here again, uh, on Facebook Live and in the sanctuary, if the Lord delays his coming. So if you, uh, can be with us next time, amen, and if you don't have anywhere to go on Sunday, uh, we are here at nine thirty for Sunday School and at three o'clock PM. Oh, yes, three o'clock PM. Somebody put it in the comments. Three o'clock PM, we're celebrating our thirty, uh, twenty-second pastoral anniversary. Amen. God has been good and he's allowed us, amen, to serve in the kingdom. He's allowed us to serve in the city. He's allowed us to serve this people, this congregation, this church, amen, for twenty-two years. Hallelujah. Not saying it's always been easy and ain't always been a bed of roses, but thank God, he's been with us every step of the way. Hallelujah. We're gonna celebrate. We're gonna celebrate, amen. We've got, uh, a guest speaker coming in. And we're looking for a high time in the Lord, amen. Bishop Michael Jackson of Inner City Tabernacle will be here, amen. And we're expecting others to join us. So y'all come on and join us, three o'clock, amen, September the fourteenth. Three o'clock, right here at Lighthouse Pentecostal Church, two hundred North Lincoln Street, Midland, Texas, seven nine seven zero one. We're gonna be here celebrating. I'm just anticipating the Lord to move through the house, amen. There's a blessing here. There's a blessing here. So you come on and get your blessing. You come on and get your blessing, amen. All right, the Lord bless you, amen. Again, we appreciate you for being here. Also, on every other, uh, every second and fourth Wednesday, we're doing our noon prayer, uh, mostly on our conference line. Amen. If you will contact us, we will get you that information. If you'd like to be a part of that, uh, we can get you that information. And then right back here on that Wednesday evening, second and fourth Wednesday at seven PM. Amen. Seven PM for our deeper life Bible study session, amen. The Lord bless you, amen. Real good is our prayer. Gracious God, we thank you for yet another time of coming together. Thank you for your goodness. Thank you for your wisdom, your knowledge, your understanding. Thank you, God, that the eyes of our understanding being open, that we will see, amen, what you're doing for us and we will hear what you're saying to the church. And God, as we depart from this place, don't dismiss us from your presence, but go with us, lead us, guide us, see us safely to our destination. Bring us back on the appointed time that we might gather again to give your name, the glory, and the honor. Oh, God, somebody's gonna need you the rest of this week. We pray that you be a fence around us, beneath us, above us. Keep us in the center of your care. Let no hurt, harm, or danger come to us. And God, keep us, cover us by your blood. Oh, God, not, not keeping us against our will, but having a mind to be kept. Lord, keep us, keep us, keep us, oh, God. And we will give you the praise. We will give you the honor and we will give you the glory. For it is all in the name of Jesus that we do pray. And now may the peace of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, the sweet communion of his Holy Spirit, rest, rule, and abide with each one now, his forth, and forever. And all the people of the Lord said, amen and amen. The Lord bless you real good. Be with us next time. Until then, continue to be blessed.